Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 p.m. And the February 5th, 2024 city council meeting will come before. The invocation will be presented by Councilmember Bankard.
Thank you. Dear God or heavenly Father, let us pray that this council make wise, dividing decisions which are always in the best interest of this community and the people. Let us pray that you will protect our police and all first responders and the people of Bel Air Beach. Let us pray that you will protect them. Your beautiful masterpiece in this island prevents historic mishaps. And let us pray that all your people find peace with one another. Set aside your differences and promote and glorify your name. In Jesus' name, your son, I pray. Amen.
Now, we'll all rise and join the assembly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City manager Kyle Reefer.
Here.
City attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you. Our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to motion? Motion is made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Councilmember Elliott. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Now, we're on to citizen comments. If a citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes. And remember to direct all questions and comments to the council. If any council members would like to respond to citizen comments, please hold your responses until we reach the council comments. The same goes for the city manager and city attorney. Would any citizens like to address the council about a topic not already on tonight's agenda? Seeing as we have none, citizen comments are now closed. All right, we are on to item three, the presentation. I'm going to paraphrase this report, so, uh... Bear with me, okay? On January the 18th, a man on a surf ski capsized in rock waters close to the Sixth Street access. Strong undercurrent prevented the man from getting back on his vessel while he was also being pulled farther out to sea. Fortunately, two brave men came to his aid and helped him back to the shore. One of those men is here this evening. Deputy Robert Shaw, would you please join me at the podium? Deputy David Robert Shaw, in recognition of your courageous and life-saving actions on January 18th, 2024, in the city of Bel Air Beach, would like to thank you for your selfless act of valor. All right, next, we have a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with a monthly law enforcement report. Don't be shy.
Yeah, good stuff. Hello, Mayor.
How you doing, Captain?
Very good. Corporal Deering is supposed to be up here giving a presentation, so if he was, I'd be doing even better. So, he's running a little late. I think he has some computer issues. So, I'm here, basically answering any questions you may have. You know how your report lags them up behind and all that, but nothing popped off the page when I read it the first time. But I don't know if anybody has specific questions or any concerns that we're going to like to address while I'm here.
Counselor? Yes?
Um, the thing that might attention this past weekend, I'm sorry.
I can hear.
Um, I think it was right around the same time as the Robert Shaw, or that new soul rescue person. Around that time, there was attempted rape in Indian Rocks Beach. Are you aware of that? It was in the paper, and I looked it up, it was in the paper, too.
Yeah, there was, um... There was a female that was jogging on the beach. There was a transient, not, neither of them live on the beaches. They visit the area. But, um, there was a transient that began falling, then there's a battery occurred. Thankfully, it wasn't a sexual battery. But the guy took off, she was on with 911. A whole bunch of charges came out of it. What it, the end of it all was, she was okay at the end. Um, and we were able to apprehend the person. They had K-9 in flight out here, and they tracked and caught her, thankfully. None of them from the area, but yeah, it was... Wasn't a good crime to be in the area, so to speak.
Well, I can't begin to thank you guys for all the service you guys do and put yourself in the line of fire every day. You guys are excellent. You're blessed to have you. And you're all under care of my day.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments?
I wonder if on the motor vehicle theft, did that occur in somebody's driveway or on the street? We don't know.
I don't, I can get the answer for you there. I'd kind of get, it just specifically was the motor vehicle theft. Excuse me. Yeah, I'll get the information. I'll see if I can get you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I was out of town over the weekend, and I heard that there was a traffic accident where a car overturned down around 12th, 13th. Have you heard that, Island?
I think that's, is that the pine, the palm tree? Yes, excuse me. Um, yes, I believe, I believe that one was the, under the influence one right there. So typically, what we'll do is, I'll send the stuff in the morning to the city manager distributor of the all the questions. When you ask him, he'll have it. In this case, the deputy actually sent it. Um, it was, it was a driving under the influence related thing. I can, I can't tell you the number of times that somebody's had a pine or a palm tree out here or something on your medians, and every single time, they've been a dog skid. And I've been doing this, what, seven years in this role? So, they just always seem to hit the medians, and they seem to hit the palm trees. This time, I don't think there's much damage. I think they scraped it. But the last time they hit Indian Rocks, they took the whole thing out. It's just, luckily, no pedestrians were injured or anything like that. Even in this case, the driver wasn't heavily injured type stuff. But it was a DUI-related crash.
With an overturned car, do you know about how fast he was?
I didn't, I haven't seen any prelims on, on the investigation, so I couldn't answer. But when I get the answer regarding the motor vehicle theft, I'll get you that answer as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sir? Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Captain. I appreciate it.
Always a pleasure, Mayor.
All right, now, we're up to the monthly code enforcement report.
Good evening, sir. Deputy Richard Trump. I apologize, I'm not in uniform tonight. A little private business going on right just after we leave here, so.
I'm just glad you're here.
Thank you, sir, very much. I appreciate it. So, uh, it's actually slowed down a little bit for the last month as far as code enforcements. We have been doing a lot of patrols, a lot of area checks, and trying to make sure that everybody is staying in check here. Um, we actually, just 18% of the time, it's been unpermitted remodels, and, uh, that has to do a lot with some of the follow-ups and everything else. But we found a couple of houses that were getting some solar, just as an example. It was a good company that was installing the solar, but unfortunately, they got a little overzealous, and they started getting things installed before all the permits and everything else were in place. They eventually did get all those permits, and the stop work orders and everything were lifted off of those houses, so everything went back and got closed. Then we had one other house that has a stop work order on it, again, for the same permits, and it's just for some slight remodel. So, other than that, things have actually been slowing down a little bit. Um, you'll see in the chart, the other enforcement, we added that. That's a new category that I passed filed to add. That was just so more that I can document, like, my extra patrols, uh, my beach patrols that I'm doing on the Polaris, and I'm trying to get out there to watch for ordinance violations and everything, uh, as far as the beaches also. So, that's a new category, but I've been spending a lot of time as far as the area checks and everything. So, other than that, with the weather a little bit, but things seem to be kind of slowing down. People are hopefully getting the idea that, you know, just do it right and get your permits like you're supposed to.
I'm sure the word is out.
We're, we're trying to do that.
Any questions or comments for the citizen? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're all doing all right. And enjoy your party.
Well, taking the wife out for lunch.
Oh, that's even better. All right, we are on to item number five, presentation from the Pinellas Suncoast Fire Rescue Institute.
I'm kind of disappointed that Deputy Trump had all those buddies left because I just wanted to congratulate the other one and how great he felt being a fireman for the day when he was actually saving...
I heard my name.
I said, Deputy Rich Shaw, I just wanted to congratulate him on being a fireman for the day, making a rescue, and saving somebody.
I will make sure that he hears it.
No, good things. And I know our chief is involved, and like you said, you guys are lucky, and we're all lucky to have the deputies that we do in this area. They are certainly top-notch. Um, on behalf of the Fire Department, I'm here this evening again. Chief Davidson is getting some annual training for one of the certifications that he holds. Uh, so therefore, I am in his place once again, but I always enjoy coming down here. Uh, so to be quick and give you the updates, training hours for January, we're starting to ramp back up. I think I mentioned before, towards the end of the year, things kind of tail off as people are on vacation, but we're getting back in the groove of things. So far this year, our men and women have put in 710 hours of fire training, 160 hours of medical training, for a combined total of approximately 170 hours of training. When it comes to my area of expertise, fire inspections, uh, we performed in January 127 annual inspections, 232 re-inspections, and in our Indian Rocks area, we performed 18 short-term rental inspections. Uh, public education, we were down here in, uh, my counterpart Stacy was down here with a couple folks at the Health and Wellness Fair. She said it was a great turnout. Um, we discussed fall prevention with the folks that came. I was not in attendance. I believe I was at a hockey game for my son, but, um, they said he, give or take 50 people maybe showed up. They passed out some stuff. Uh, we had multiple fire stations tour, tours given, um, at Station 27, 28. And I believe the beach cleanup was down here, the bridge cleanup, I'm sorry, was down here. We set it pretty down here. Um, so our guys and gals pitched in for that beach cleanup or bridge cleanup, I keep confusing the two. Um, we want to pass along our special thanks to you folks for allowing us to utilize your great space here to, um, hold our district chief promotional process. I believe that went pretty well. And we will also be back here again on Tuesday to perform the other portion, which is the tenants' promotional exam. It's a little more in-depth than, uh, district chief one. This is more, uh, we'll say, scenario and tactical base for the men and women that are on, excuse me, in charge of the apparatus for the day. Uh, operationally, Chief Davidson and Chief Carpenter are continuing to work with the county on obtaining a transport capable rescue to put in service, which I believe we're also working with Kyle on looking for a home during these hours that this unit will be in service. At first, it's not going to be a 70-day, 24-hour thing. Uh, we'll slowly phase it in. And I believe one unit or another will be located here in the meantime until we get that other station constructed in northern Indian Rocks Beach. Uh, as far as the calls were concerned, we had, there was a total of 11 calls for service in Bel Air Beach. There were four motor vehicle crashes, one I believe that you alluded to, two water rescues, again, one of which the gentleman obtained a reward for, and three medical calls. There was also, uh, during one of the storms, I believe, there was an electrical hazard, and one fire alarm in a residential structure. That's all I have for you this evening. Either, excuse me, any of you folks have any questions?
Do you want to have questions there?
Just really thank you, thank your guys for coming out there. I mean, uh, I'm putting it on the website now. We have a bunch of kids from high schools and that.
Yeah, well, we certainly appreciate the partnership that we get out with you folks, and I appreciate you having me on the city.
Thank you, Chief. All right, now, we are up to item six, which is the city attorney's report. Mr. Mora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any significant report apart from the agenda items tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, we, we are forging ahead with the legislative session, of course. That concludes March 8th, so we're just about at the halfway point of the legislative session. For those of you who are tracking, Lega City circulates publications and we periodically update you with memoranda. Some of the bills moving through right now. One that could preempt local jurisdictions on short-term rentals. Um, they're looking, there's been some traction on the bills to increase homestead exemptions, which of course will affect cities and revenue screenings and the like. But, um, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Counselor? All right, and Mr. Mora, I'm sure we'll be discussing more later this hour. Now, we're up to item seven, the city manager report. Mr. Reefer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to run through the projects quickly, the Gulf Boulevard underground project. Um, the latest from Duke is the Utility Consultants of Florida, our project management consultants that are working with us. They need to go and request each property that Duke is wanting to put equipment to see if they would consider signing off on an easement, given the size of the right-of-way on Gulf Boulevard. I feel like property owners are not going to want to sign an easement, but we are in the process of, um, checking with each property owner to see if it's something they want to consider. Otherwise, the plan will go back to the original request, which was to put the switch boxes in the, uh, in the, uh... Can't think of the name of it. The, uh... Whatever the other quarter, I'm trying to think. Uh, I can't, a transformer, is that good? Yeah, a transformer is on the right-of-way because on Gulf Boulevard, you, you have about eight feet to the sidewalk, and then you have another eight feet after that that goes to the property line. So, there's plenty of room. Um, for some reason, Duke is insisting that we request easements to put it on the property. Um, we did so in the south portion, and we couldn't get them all, so we ended up moving it back to the right-of-way. Just so, he'd be able to live with what's going on. I, I suspect that, you know, it'll irritate some residents to have this request, but, um, it's part of the process right now to go through this. Um, Stormwater Improvement Project, uh, we have it on the agenda for the award, uh, along with the stormwater pump system design, which is discussed in the work session. So, that are the two items coming up on the agenda. The code review service, we had the introduction by Louis Serna. Um, and he went over kind of the process that we're going to be going through. We're going to divide up the chapters that he mentioned into different groups. The first group is going to be on February 19th work session. And the chapters that are going to be covered are chapter 10, 22, 30, and 50. So, chapter 10 is building and building regulations. Chapter 22 is environment. Chapter 30, marine structures, activities at facilities. And chapter 50 is streets, sidewalks, and other public ways. And the RFP for auditing services, next month's meeting, we are going to have Softmarsh, our contractor for our audit, come in and present the draft act for, which is the, uh, the annual copy of its financial report. Um, then the draft will go to the audit committee, who will meet, and at that time, we'll go over a selection criteria for the RFP, so we can move forward on next year's audit contract. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Reefer? Yes.
Kyle, so the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding, what, what streams does this particular phase oppress?
So, this is going to be North of Causeway Boulevard. Um, and they're breaking, it's phase two, um, which we've talked about in the planning process. Phase one was south, the Causeway Boulevard, phase two is north. But they're breaking phase two into two parts from, um, Causeway to 22nd Street, and then 22nd Street to the marina.
Okay, so this is the Causeway to 22nd Street phase?
Um, well, it's both. They're, they're, they just got to go down the line to each, each spot where they designed to put equipment and ask, um, if, if the property owner is willing to grant an easement for this. Naturally, there's pushback because when people look at their yard, they go, wow, there's a lot of space. Why do I need to put the equipment on my private property?
Okay, thank you. That's what we're...
Timeline?
Timeline?
Yeah. Timeline for that part.
Oh, we're, they're completely done. Um, and the equipment is covered on the south end, so that should be of all the materials in the marina. That should be happening in no matter of months for phase one. For phase two, um, optimistically hoping that we can get, um, rolling with Utility Consultants of Florida's part on the job, which is installing a conduit in three to four months. Throughout this project, they, they moved through everything needed to do, and then we kind of waited for, for decisions to be made.
And if you can't get the easements, what's the, what's the, uh... What's the backup plan? Backup plan, just put it over, in the right-of-way. Just put it in the right-of-way. Any questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we are on to the city court report.
I included my monthly summary in the agenda packet, and I don't have anything of significance to report.
And it looks like business as usual.
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
I wanted to thank you very much for the completeness of the agenda, uh, excuse me, the, uh, the minutes of meetings where you actually do more than just record the votes, but a little bit about the discussion, and I find that very helpful.
Sure.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Now, we're on to consent agenda, items nine and 10. This is for approval of the January 8th, 2024 city council meeting minutes and approval of the January 29th, 2024 city council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve is written and presented. Motion is made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's right, Councilmember Elliott also. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now, we are on to the regular agenda, item number 11. This is for consideration of appointment to the Board of Adjustments, current alternate member, Mark Mariano. If Mr. Mariano is here, would he like to introduce himself to the council? Well, I guess he's not here. Uh, would anyone like to, any citizen like to comment on this report?
Once again, I did not drive, uh, Mr. Mariano has been an alternate member, and so he's a very fit for the slide into a voting member.
Thank you. All right, uh, counsel, we're going to need a motion to appoint Mark Mariano to the Board of Adjustments. Motion is made by Frank Bankard. Again, do I have a second? Second. I'll go as Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Bankard, do you have a four?
Uh, he's already in order, as the gentleman said. It's just a slide position.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Your name?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
And Mayor Gaddis.
Aye. So, as you know, let's, uh, congratulations to our alderman, Mr. Mariano. And, uh, soon, thank you for serving our city. All right, now, we're up to item number 12. This is for consideration of awarding the project bid B-23-01 for street drainage improvements for a line of streets to Morgan Drive, placed on the agenda by city manager Reefer. Mr. Reefer, you have a four.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to recap, this project is, uh, to wrap up the rest of the, uh, Stormwater Master Plan. It, it stands from the 9th Street in the south to Morgan Drive all the way north. Um, most of this is necessary maintenance and repair for our aging stormwater system. Um, quickly, there's, uh, about 26,000 square yards of milling and resurfacing for the streets, 21,000 millimeter feet of curb replacement, and 1,700 cure-in-place pipe lining. The, uh, there was two bids, um, that came in on demand. So, we advertised, and they were Cuddaminga and Ruth Voits Incorporated and Harbor Contracting LLC. And Harbor Contracting came in lowest significantly by close to $500,000. And, uh, we, uh, checked on the projects, checked on their work experience, checked on how they feel about getting the project complete in our timeline, and everything came back great. Um, they have active jobs where they're neighboring the city to the south at Indian Rocks Beach, and they, uh, speak highly of Harbor Contracting. So, um, it is my recommendation that we award the B-23-01 Stormwater Improvement Project to the lowest bidder, Harbor Contracting LLC.
Before we go to council comments and debate, would any citizen like to comment on awarding this project to Harbor Contracting? Uh, yes, sir. Please come up.
John Hancer, 22nd Street. I understand the city manager is saying this is primarily maintenance and repair. So, if somebody can refresh my memory, it's my understanding that the remaining stormwater system was supposed to be camered to determine whether or not new pipe needed to be done. So, I'm, based on what you just said, assuming no pipe is going to be replaced. Is that...
That, that's correct. Only, only cure-in-place lining for repair.
Okay. The other thing, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I mean, the Citizens Advisory Committee worked on this very, very hard while Lynn was still the city manager. And we came up to try to cost-reduce this to where, once we started, we would finish it all the way at one time instead of, in phases, moving equipment off-site and then bringing it back because of the expense. I'm assuming that's what this contract is going to do to save the city money. So, I stand here in favor of it being approved. We're into February. Hurricane season is going to start in a few months. It'd be nice to get the majority of this done before hurricane season. We've already had two storms in recent months that created havoc, and they're only going to get worse if something hits us again. So, y'all need to vote on this and get going on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancer. Would any other citizens like to comment on this topic? All right, citizen comments are closed. Counsel, we're going to need a motion to award project bid B-23-01 to Harbor Contracting LLC. Do I have a motion? Yes. Were you making the motion?
Yes, I am.
And, uh, Boyd Roberts, and second by, uh, Sheller. Mr. Roberts, do you have a four?
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this, um, obviously, the last meeting, at which point it did not pass. So, there's been a lot of information available for this project, the benefits, why the city needs it. Uh, I think that the, uh, city manager did a great... I think that the city manager did a great job of explaining the details and the cost. It's time to move on this and get it done.
Other comments from the council? Yes.
While I voted no last month, I'm going to support this this month because during a work session with some people that don't get done, we actually made an agreement and one night my colleague here, Shaw Elliott, coming up with an idea and a study for his pumps, which reflected early, very, the whole city. So I just want to say, I think that's the way governments should work. You work things out, you come to an agreement and benefits everyone. That's it.
I'm very happy to support this measure. Thank you.
And I'm very happy to support both measures. I'm glad we were able to work through this. So if there are no other comments, I'm going to ask Renee to do the vote.
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
And Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. The contract is awarded to Harbor Contracting LLC and thank everyone for working through this. All right, we are up to Item Number Thirteen. This is for consideration of ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one. This is a first reading. City Attorney Moore, would you please read the ordinance?
Happy to, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance twenty-two forty-four dash zero-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Amendment Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council, Division One, Generally, to create Section Two dash thirty-one of the City's Code of Ordinances entitled Compensation of Council to Establish Annual Salary for Members of the City Council and Guidelines of Running Reimbursement, Providing for the Implementation of Administrative Actions, Providing for Clarification, Providing for Separability, and Providing for an Effective Date. This has been a reading, ordinance twenty-two forty-four dash zero-one, by title only on first reading. Councilmembers, this is a direct, this ordinance was produced in direct response to at least potential consensus direction at the work session last week. I drafted this based on the discussion you had. As we are on first reading, I want to underscore, if this is not be added by, as we know, we can revise and amend as appropriate. The numbers used, the mayor during the work session provided backup materials on what other communities compensate their council members. I believe the sample that was recommended be used for this draft were the numbers for Indian Harbor Beach. And so those are the numbers that you see reflected here. That's where those numbers came from in terms of the three fifty for the mayor and the two fifty for individual council members. There was a somewhat lengthy discussion about expenses and a general understanding and agreement, I think this is in line with your current practices, that where you, for example, to go to the league of cities annual conference, that registrations and things like that are typically handled by the city, this memorializes that. I would suggest that there was a discussion at one point that perhaps in lieu of or as an alternative to a salary, perhaps having reimbursed expenses that are directly associated with the office, such as preparation and completion of financial disclosure forms to be accounted for. That is not explicitly provided for here. If that is something that you intend to provide for, I would suggest that you make that explicit so that there can be no misunderstanding and there's not a question on trying to fit some, you know, the proverbial square peg in the round hole. But since that had been discussed as an alternative to a salary and this, and the proposed measure was a salary, I did not include that here, nor do I, is it my opinion that that would fall broadly within this. I would prefer that if you intend to make something that distinct, that you do so explicitly to avoid any issues. But that's the ordinance you have before you. As far as the effective date, you will see here, because of your charter, it's the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon enactment by the City Council. As the ordinance itself, pursuant to Section two point oh three of the City of Bel Air Beach's charter, the portion of this ordinance establishing a salary for council members shall become effective upon the date of commencement of the terms of council members elected in the second regular election following passage of this ordinance, beginning first with the regular March twenty twenty-four election cycle. So that says that the first of the two, the first will be March, provided we have this adopted on the second and final reading before.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Now, before we go to the council, would any citizen like to comment on this proposed ordinance? All right, citizen comments are closed. Council, we need a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one.
So.
Motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second? Seconded by Elliot. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personally, I couldn't care less about receiving this salary. My comments at the workshop were the following. If this minimal salary that we're going to give out, if it's approved, would assist any of our citizens that were interested in being on our council. And the one thing that may have been holding them back would be the costs associated for them with regards to the Form Six by having to hire someone to assist them. And that varies depending on the complexity of the financial situation of some of our citizens. But if that, if this one item will help people feel like they're more comfortable in running for our council seat, then I'm in favor of it. And that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Would any other else like to make a comment?
I would echo those remarks. That's the only reason why I would support this. I think that, as Mr. Bankard explained at the meeting, it is an honor to serve on this committee, we're not looking for salaries or for salaries for future people, but just trying to find a means to help build this board with all white people and try to eliminate any barriers that they might have.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm dead against this, but the work that you, Mr. Mayor, have worked for, I don't think two hundred and fifty dollars a month, three hundred dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars a month is going to make anybody's decision change to run for council or not. I totally believe this is an honor to serve the people of Bel Air Beach. I think this is one great community and one of the reasons is because of so much volunteerism. And while I'm going to vote for it, I'm also going to hope, because this doesn't go only until affected to twenty twenty-seven, right? At the earliest?
At the earliest, correct. And just for the benefit of all, when I say at the earliest, that depends in part on how your election cycles may flesh out following the charter, those, the elections.
And it could always be repealed by the next council.
Every ordinance is subject to amendment.
Okay, thank you. All right, and my reason for bringing this to the council was, you see right now, we have four, we have four council members. It's bad enough that the state of Florida is bearing down on us, forcing us to do this Form Six. I don't, I don't see it getting better. I only see it getting worse. And every time that I meet with other mayors and we trade stories, they all, they all say, you know, we're not in this for the money. But whenever they hear that we're getting nothing for what we're going through, they don't understand why we're doing it. And I'm not going to say that anyone is better or worse than Bel Air Beach. Everybody has their own set of values, but what I will say is that this is a very, very small, in fact, I think the lowest salary that I can find in all of Ellis County to compare us to. And so I matched that salary and instead of thinking about it as a salary, it's more of an appreciation pay for what we have to give every day in the city. So that's why I oppose this. And that's, I'm hoping in the future, we're not going to be where we're at right now, where we have a full council and we have people that are willing to step up and join us and despite our city, what it is. And that's all I have to say. Any other comments before I call for a closing? No? All right, Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. And the first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one passes and we will vote on this again next morning. Thank you once again to all my council members. All right, now we're up to Item Number Fourteen. Authorization to Execute a Purchase Order with Gemini Engineering and Sciences Incorporated for the Investigation and Design of a Stormwater Pump System. City Manager Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this is the pump station design project that we discussed in the last work session. Gemini Engineering has put together a scope of services. The beginning work on this project is to look at some of the existing surveys we have, also get information on the underground utilities throughout the area of Ninth Street, do some geotechnical investigation and explore what power is available to run a pump that we're considering. And once this information is collected, they're going to come up with a design. They already can start, started communicating with the pump company, the M.I. Pumps, that came to the presentation here in December. And they're going to find out, give us a good estimate of cost for the project and what to expect on how effective a feasibility study would be to install a pump and what effect it'll have on the area of Ninth Street. So that would be before we move forward with any actual construction. So built in, based on the timeline provided by Gemini Engineering, they estimated about one to two months to gather this information and then we would have them come in to do a presentation to the city council to, to explore if there's any revisions they want made or just explain overall what they've discovered and so that the council can make a decision on it at that point. Again, the overall cost of the PO is twenty-two thousand, but, you know, that'll be as we go throughout the project, how it'll be built out. So just want to lay that out. Again, I included the proposal that we're with engineer Larry Flutie and designing for what we need, so that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Let's go to the citizens for comments.
Unless we do something like the Netherlands did to block any water from the ocean coming in, put pumps out there, when we have an incident a few times during the year, to me, is not cost effective. That's a waste of money. Just my opinion. Eventually, I think we could change name in the city in another hundred years. None of us will be around. We could probably call it Bel Air Venice Beach, because we're going to have flooding in every street and probably have gondolas moving up and down the street. It's just a matter of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Mr. Hanson?
John Hanson, 22nd Street. You know, several meetings back, when we had many more residents here, we discussed this issue of flooding, a statement was made. And the reality is, folks, we're surrounded by water. And it's just like the previous resident. You want to eliminate the water? Build a wall. And even that isn't a guarantee. Yeah, I understand people down at the south end of the city, which is lower than where I'm at, complain a little bit, but we have these check valves. I'm assuming they function the way they're intended to. I'm an old U.S. Navy engineer. I know about valves big time. I fixed them all the time in pumps. So I don't get the point. And the other thing is, the estimated cost of this research is twenty-two thousand dollars. When we went over the budget last year, I don't know where it's going to come from. It's not in the budget. So somebody needs to enlighten us as to where in the budget that money lies. And I tend to concur. I don't know that the pumps is a wise deal if everything else is working properly. And in conjunction with that, on the stormwater system, these receivers at the rain gutters, if you will, I can tell you that two or three of them there in Bay Shore, 22nd Street are too damn young, small to accept the amount of rain sometimes. They're too small and we're not doing anything about that either. So that's part of something else that should have been considered initially, so I'm just bringing it up again. I spent twenty-four years in the Navy on seven different ships. I know about these things. So appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Would any other citizens like to comment on this topic? All right, citizen comments are closed. So we continue on with a motion to authorize the execution of this purchase order. Motion is made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Mr. Bankard, you have the floor.
Well, we did bring in one contractor back in December and MWI pumps, and I gave him a bunch of scenarios and it's true. When the water breaks the seawall, it's going to consist of flooding. The problem is, on the south end of this island, we don't get rid of the water until the tide goes below two point five feet. Therefore, back door to the dally, we had water in the street till five o'clock. People had it in their house. National Guard didn't come down our street until I think three o'clock, four o'clock in the night, moving vehicle because they couldn't get down faster. And the other thing is, we just had a bad storm in December, as mentioned, which nobody evacuated. It came in around midnight with three and a half, four feet of water in the street. We don't really have any, if someone had to get down these streets during an emergency, ambulance or whatever, you'd have to get a special unit to get down those streets. So this is a matter of safety, this is a matter of not doing the same thing we did seventy-five years ago by putting, replacing pipes that never really worked. Clearly, as MWI pump, Mr. Flutie said, if you had no water in the street before it breached the seawall, even after it breached the seawall, that would have been vacated through the pumps and it would have stayed being vacated for a long period of time. Yes, he agreed that the monkey water in the street, it would be in the yard, it would be in the driveway. You go down to First Street, up to even Fourteenth, Fifteenth Street, it's a mess and we can do a lot better than just by repaving the streets, replacing pipes. When we did High Street, Sixth Street, I believe, the check valves are too low, okay? They don't open up until I think it's down to like two point three feet. So that water just lays and accumulates for hours and it needs, we need to correct it.
Thank you, Mr. Bankard. Other comments?
It's my, it's my pleasure to strongly support this measure and I'd like to emphasize that it is a feasibility study and I believe that it is our fiduciary duty as being the trustees of the money in this community to evaluate all reasonable measures that are available. are available to us. And, uh, that's what this study is designed to do and, um, I support it. Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, like, like the two citizens that spoke, I think anytime we have an opportunity to spend money to support our city, we need to ask ourselves a few questions. One of which would be, a project that we're gonna do, does this support or aid or help a majority of the citizens in our city? Do we have to ask that question? We also have to ask, you know, the, the amount of money we're gonna spend. For example, if it doesn't support a majority of our citizens, but it's a very small amount of money for the actual fix, not, not this particular study, then more than likely that would be something we would probably wanna take on that instance. If it's a large sum of money and it only really helps or supports a small portion of the city, we don't like to say no to anybody that are having problems, but we need to make smart decisions with the money we're spending. We don't know right now what that cost is gonna be for the potential repair. So, this is a feasibility study, as was stated earlier. I'm trying to approach this with an open mind because my gut tells me the solution is not gonna be inexpensive in order to try to keep this water out of here. And that's what we need to rethink about how we're doing it. Now, there could be multiple ways to, to pay for this. It may not even be the city's money. You know, perhaps the residents that live in that area could take on some of that cost or all of that cost, kinda like when part of our city put in underground, um, electrical stuff. So, they paid for that via an assessment on their tax bills. So, things like that we need to consider. So, no other citizens?
I'm sorry, uh, we close citizen comments and we, we don't do back and forth during these debates. I, I apologize, but, uh, that's, that's our standard practice. Uh, are you finished?
So, we did, we did talk about this at length, at the workshop and for this feasibility study, so that we can at least have an answer as to what a solution potentially can be along with some associated costs. I would say sort of reluctantly, I'm gonna support this, but I am gonna support it so we can move forward.
All right, and, uh, give you a little backstory if you didn't see, uh, the, the last regular council meeting. We're in a situation right now to where the only way anything can pass because of our charter rules, you have to have a minimum of four yes votes. Everything has to be unanimous. This feasibility study was required for us to be able to pass the stormwater drain project. Uh, there was no, no other way around it. It was killed by someone sitting up here and, um, uh, this was, uh, through negotiations. This is what we came up with. This doesn't say that we're gonna spend millions of dollars on pumps. What it says is that we're gonna do a feasibility study and see if it's even possible, will it work? And if so, then we'll go forward from there and we'll have to vote again. Uh, but, this is the way that sometimes in politics, you have to get them stuck. And so, uh, I am all for this and I actually hope that we're able to do it. I hope that it actually works out.
I, uh, contacted the state and I'm also contacting the Fed. There are a lot of grants that support these studies, okay? Pump replacements, pump installations. It may cost us very minimal to do this. As N.W.I. Pump said, don't do it the whole city at one time. Do a couple of streets. But, you got Ninth Street, we're gonna reply. Let's do Ninth Street, see if it works, fix the waters, get some problems away from City Hall. If it doesn't work, maybe it doesn't cost us that much money. But, until we do this study, I don't think we can determine that.
Do we have any other comments from the council? All right. We're gonna do another, uh, another roll call notice on this one, just for the record. This is to authorize the city manager, uh, for the execution of a purchase order for the investigation and design of a stormwater pump system. Okay?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye.
Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed. Thank you. All right, we are on to item number fifteen, which is consideration for public works pay increases. This was placed on the agenda by City Manager Reefer. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this is a pay study that, uh, over the past couple of months, Public Works, uh, Department of Community Services, Services Administrator has collected, um, some information from local municipalities, um, cities throughout Dallas County. This, um, was brought on by the fact that we've been experiencing increase in cost, um, especially cost of living for, um, this area of Florida. And, uh, we wanted to compare the, uh, the wages to what other municipalities were getting employees. So, once we gathered all the information, I, uh, all the Community Services Administrator compiled it for me and then I evaluated it. I included a, uh, chart of the, let's see, nine municipalities that we were able to give job descriptions and comparable, where wages from tribal range, I mean, in order, that you could see, uh, in comparison. We have two positions. We have a service worker three, which is a function that's crew leader, and we have two service worker, two positions. When you go through all the municipalities, depending on the size, um, and what, uh, you know, what work they do, whether they have different utilities, parks, facilities, it's, um, you know, you have to kinda look at, um, the different job description, I try to find something comparable. I laid them out. One thing I tried to, um, focus on is that, you know, I'm looking at a position as, um, like a lead responsibility for, um, service workers, which are in our city and actually spans across, you know, parks maintenance, utility maintenance, stormwater, um, and actual facilities. So, um, in doing so, I, uh, laid them all out. I couldn't find some, some cities didn't have exactly what I was looking for as far as comparable, but when I did lay them out and average them, I used that average, which was down at the bottom of the worksheet that I put together, um, to determine what a recommended minimum would be for each position that we have. The last piece of that is, um, we have two fairly new employees that have not put in a year of service yet, um, so I believe that it is, um, you know, recommended, I recommend that they stay at the starting salary, but we do have another position that has been in the, in that specific, sort of work, service worker three position for over a year and I made an adjustment, um, based on that, based on what we typically do for our annual merit base. So, that's how I arrived at the recommended adjustment and through, we state the, uh, I recommend that we increase the hourly wage for service worker three, which is the crew leader, um, from twenty-one dollars per hour to twenty-four sixty-eight, and the service worker two position from eighteen dollars per hour to twenty dollars per hour. Um, and I also asked that if we do move forward with these wage increases that we started at the current pay period, which, um, began on January twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Let's go to the citizens for comments on this topic. Yes, sir. Please come right up, Mr. Hanson.
John Hanson, Twenty-Second Street. Where in the budget are we gonna get this extra money over above the merit pay raises that were approved in the budget for fiscal year twenty-four?
So, to answer that question, if this is approved, um, calculating out the personnel costs, it would, for a full year, um, we're looking at an increase of, uh, eighteen thousand dollars in the public works budget, uh, because we're about one-third into the fiscal year. Um, currently, it's about a twelve-thousand-dollar increase. That could be a budget adjustment that we can make at the next regular meeting, or, um, typically, we could, um, see how the rest of the budget plays out with expenditures and find out if we, if we need to remove that much.
Any other, uh, comments from the citizens? All right, citizen comments are closed. The motion to proceed with public works pay increases. Motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Second, seconded by Frank Banker. Mr. Roberts, do you have the floor?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The short time that I've been here, I know the city has had difficulty in replacing staff that have moved on for whatever reason, and coupled with the fact that we have very small crews out there in the field. When I first came here, we had, uh, two service workers and obviously if one of those workers are sick or injured or go on vacation, there's many tasks out there that can't be done by one person. So, it's imperative that you have, from a safety standpoint and an efficiency standpoint, at least two people there. We have since then brought on one additional person, so we have three, which is great. But again, I reiterate that the times that we have had one or two of those positions vacant, it just took a long time for anybody to step up to the plate and apply, first of all, and a lot of it had to do with the salary. So, that was the, I think it's a great idea that Kyle came up with to raise those, to make them competitive with our other beach communities down the street, so that when if we need to fill a position, we'll at least be competitive and be able to fill them. So, that's why I'm supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Other comments? Yes?
Uh, Mr. Manager, if you can confirm, please, are we fully staffed or do we have any open positions?
We currently have admin assistant position open, which is under the non-departmental budget.
Right. This, this department is fully staffed.
Correct. It's been fully staffed since, um, the beginning of this year.
And I wanted to thank you for the charts and the comparison. It made it, made the data very easy to read and understand, so thank you.
Mr. Banker? I'm good with the old lady. Come in. All right, and, uh, based upon what I've seen of our neighboring communities and, uh, you know, it's kinda hard to compare apples to apples because we do have employees that wear so many hats, but, uh, the last thing that I would want is someone to have an easier job and make more by traveling five miles away or two miles away to go to another community. Uh, so, I'm for this and I will be more than happy to vote on a budget amendment whenever that time comes, if it's absolutely necessary. Do you have any other, uh, comments? Mr. Roberts, you have the last word.
I say it's an under vote.
All right. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed. Please tell your staff that this council greatly appreciates all their hard work.
Yeah, I do. Thank you, sir.
Item sixteen. Consideration of a second addendum to employment contract for the services of Kyle Reefer and City Manager at the city of Bel Air Beach. Uh, City Attorney Nora, is it your item?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Again, this was done, um, in response to discussion held our last work session. The general discussion contemplated a potential, um, functional salary renegotiation with the manager or additional, um, salary compensation. What you have before you is a template, um, that reflects what it would look like were you to agree to a salary adjustment, some proposed language, and, and, and what that addendum would be. The blanks are blanks because there was not a substantive discussion about the figure as this amounts to a, a negotiation of sorts. Um, I did not want to put you at any one figure based on, you know, any idea of mine or any single council member, and so, um, I believe this measure is, is more better understood as Mr. Bankard's than mine, as I believe he initially proposed it. So, with that, I would yield except to state that you have language here that we would conform to whatever, uh, this council agrees, should reach agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Nora. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone would like to comment? Seeing as there are no citizens. Would like to comment on this? Great close citizen comments. Uh, council, make a motion to proceed with the second addendum. Motion. Motion made by Frank Banker. May I second? Anyone would like to second this?
At this stage, you're just seconding the discussion, not, not a second ad, uh, to approve a final document.
Right, correct. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Roberts. Uh, Mr. Banker, do you have the floor?
Well, first of all, I'm gonna thank Renee for giving us all the work for the research that he did. And, I was alarmed a little bit when I saw Indian insurers currently offering interim, interim manager's position at one-thirty-six, four-nine-oh. He won't only pay Kyle for fifteen, I believe. So, Kyle's actually been doing this job by paying him for three years, about March. He's well underpaid and if I was him, if I didn't get some kind of above, I'd have my resume sent out to Indian insurers tonight. So, in order to be good business people and reward our city manager who dedicates twenty-four seven to us, I think a one-hundred, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-dollar salary is very acceptable.
Mr. Banker, could you repeat that, please?
One-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. Uh, just for the record, we also budgeted a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars when we were out looking for a city manager, so we're still well below that mark. And if you look at, at Bear Beach, one-forty, at New Rock Beach, one-fifty-nine, uh, we are still very, very low.
Council?
May I ask a point of order here in that I understand that the city manager's salary will be a public record, but are the discussions normally held in public and certainly before the candidate?
Yes, short answer. Um, all of this is, no, it is in fact public record. Your question is well placed. Let me start from there. Your question is well placed. But, um, salary discussions for, even were I to come to you with a proposed amendment contract for attorney terms, um, all of that is, and, all of that is, uh, takes place in the public because it's an official act, uh, which the Sunshine Law requires that any official act of this body happen in the public. The added complicating layer here is, uh, the position of city manager, regardless of whether it's talking about Kyle or anybody else, is a charter position. There are three positions in the city that you folks directly supervise. That's myself, the clerk, and the manager, and so those discussions happen in the open. And should we ever come to the unfortunate place where you desire to have those positions vacated, uh, that would also happen in the public. I think your charter might have some procedures set forth, but generally speaking, all of that is in the public. And, and I can, and I, I appreciate that question and I wanna make sure we keep an eye on questions like that. Um, with, with all respect to Ms. Rose, as she's starting in this position, she has decades of experience as a clerk in another state and even as we've started to handle some of the public records requests coming in, there's things that in Florida are open record and in other states are not. And so navigating that, um, it, it's, it's totally normal for it to sort of rub up against sensibilities, but yes, that happens in the public. We don't have the ability to tell Kyle, he must leave, um, during that discussion or that he should be excluded from the public here.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, would you like to comment?
I'm a little bit taken aback as we didn't talk about amounts before and I think all of us here are incredibly pleased with Kyle's performance and feel that he's imminently qualified for this position and, and very, very impressed frankly with his, the way he's navigated. he's navigated through this and the breadth of his knowledge. So, all of that's very good. I think the fact that Indian Shores may be an outlier in terms of the size of the community and the amount of the pay there, and I was just going to try to run a number, and math is not my thing, so I'm slow in pulling up my calculator, but it seems to be a fairly large increase in a single amount. And there were negotiations for this position initially. It was an agreeable point at that. We're off schedule with that. It's an acceleration of a pay raise, again, fully support one. It's a question of data.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
I think there's possibly two additional columns on this chart that would help me, and Randy talked about some scenarios with the city clerk, but if I knew how much experience these existing city managers had with the city, that they're currently the city manager, in addition to how many years' experience they've had as a city manager in total, because they could have 15 years at a different city, albeit it could be different if they came from South Dakota because of the different rules and regulations there, but it would still be, they sat in a position and worked a position as a city manager somewhere else, that type of thing. Kyle brings a lot of value because he's been with the city, not long in the city manager position, but in a previous position, where he's had an opportunity to learn about our city, know our citizens, and know the things that have been challenges to our city, so that's very valuable. But those two additional columns would help me, and I think him as well, when we're seeing these numbers, if somebody may have, you know, $185,000, and, oh, that's a much bigger city. Madera Beach, $140,000. Perhaps they've been in that position for 15 years, I have no idea, and maybe prior to that, 10 years in another city. But when we're just trying to bring it down apples to apples, any additional information like that, I think, helps us understand where Kyle's number needs to be.
Yeah, my math is correct, that's an 18% increase.
And Kim did bring up another valid point, which is, we discussed this number way back when, and it was agreed upon in the contract form, and Frank also brought up a great valid point. It was another individual that we were willing to pay a significantly higher number, which means we do have money in the budget for Kyle's scenario, as well as some of those other positions that we talked about earlier. So, it's always a tough choice and decision. Kyle's given a great job. I don't know what the magic number is.
Well, it seems to be that 18% is one heck of a pay increase. At my family's company, we did recognize that there was issues with what we were paying, inflation, housing, fuel, a couple of main factors that we looked at, and for the good ones, I think the largest salary increase we gave an employee was a 10% raise in one year. I don't think I've ever given anyone an 18% raise in one year. So I calculated a 10% salary increase to become $126,500. That's what I calculated on, but I'm hoping to other suggestions.
Are you making a mention to that?
It's not that bad, you know, this is just, we're debating on, you know.
If I can pitch a little bit, Bel Air Bluffs, they took the, I think it was 2020, they took the city clerk and advanced her into the city administrator's act or whatever, gave her a, I think she was underpaid when she was a city clerk. So that's the lowest payroll there at $126,000. Everything else is well, well above that. Like I said, we budgeted $180,000. I think Kyle poured $180,000. I should say, I should say we never proposed, I think it's worth it, but whatever you want to compute, have a number, Mr. Mayor?
Well, that was the number that I was suggesting was $126,500. I can agree with that.
So that's 10%?
10%.
That's 10%, and it puts it in line with Bel Air Bluffs, our much smaller neighbor, but, oh no, I'm sorry, Bel Air Bluffs, not Bel Air Shores.
Right, it's puts it in line with Bel Air.
Bluffs, yes. Which is a community that has retail owners, which is something that we don't have here. I think a 10% raise is competitive and certainly just right.
Mr. Roberts?
You agree?
Mr. Baker? All right. Mr. Nora?
On the contract, the addendum, they should state $126,500. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is a second placeholder establishing when that amount should take effect, whether it is retroactive to a certain date or beginning on a certain date. You can see that in parentheses, made in proceeding between 2024 at the end of paragraph A. How do you wish to?
I would imagine effective immediately.
All right. I can, to confirm, can you just recite, one more time for the record, the salary amount? Understood. Counsel, anyone who can?
All right, so, I'm going to have to take a roll call vote on this one. I'm just going to keep it going online on this one. This is to create a second addendum, increasing the city manager's yearly salary to $126,500. Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just before we begin, I want to be very clear procedurally. This will come back to you. You've already seen the documents, and we will, if this is approved, we will memorialize it, execute it without further need of advice.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Reifler. Mr. Nora, please proceed with the second addendum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor.
Lunch is on Kyle tomorrow.
Item number 17, authorization of a sole source purchase of a LaPro Waystop 24-inch valve for street drainage improvements, project B23-01. Mr. Reifler?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a sole source purchase. It is a LaPro check valve. This is, when we first started looking into check valves, there are a lot of different models. This is a newer, more innovative model than some of the ones that were done in the past. If you remember the duck flap, or, sorry, the duck mouth ones or the flap mechanisms that often would get jammed up and not close back all the way. So, these aren't perfect, but they seem to perform a lot better than some of the earlier designs, and we've been using them throughout the city. Currently have 14 installed that we maintain monthly. But this particular one, we go to the swell outfall at Bayside Park, and the streets that it affects is cedar and spruce, which runs through the retention pond up to the inlet at the sand and both of those streets. So, again, this is just a sole source, a sole source purchase that, per purchasing procedures, I need approval from council, and it's part of the storm work.
Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Other comments? All right. Citizen comments are closed. Going to need a motion to authorize this purchase.
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker, being seconded by Shaw Elliott. Mr. Banker, do you have a floor?
I really think this should be included, item number 12, but it's a separate item. It just, of course, it could be more than a mortgage down, it's only 10%.
Thank you, Mr. Banker. Any other comments, questions? I think on this one, we can, we can just do a voice, a voice vote. This is to authorize city manager to purchase from a sole source for a 24-inch valve for street drainage improvements, project B23-01. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Reifler, you are authorized to proceed. Thank you. Item 18, authorization to purchase an Exmark Laser ZE 48-inch mower. This is placed on the agenda by city manager Reifler.
Mayor, this is another purchase that is off a state contract. The lawnmower is part of our capital equipment replacement plan. We, each year in the budget, save $5,000 over time. We build it up, and right now, we're due to replace our 48-inch Toro. It's a 2012 Z Master, so this is a comparable mower. We've, community services administrator, Aaron Lance, he reached out to a lot of the public works departments throughout the county and asked just personal, their personal opinion on what newer model mowers have been working well with minimal repairs, and the Exmark Laser, he came back with great, great reviews. So, again, this is off a state contract that provides, that was publicly bid and provides a 20% discount on the MSRP, and, you know, we're looking to purchase this from Chuchulang Equipment, who we've done this with in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Citizen comments? All right, we're back to the council. We need a motion to authorize this purchase.
So.
Motion made by councilmember Elliott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Elliott, do you have a floor?
It seems to be normal, the equipment purchases, things wear out. We had a 20-plus-year-old mower, let's replace it.
Other comments? I just have one question about the sole source, or not sole source, but the, because it's a state contract, is it automatically the lowest price? I know it says 20% off MSRP, but normally MSRP doesn't mean anything. So, my question is, is should we have at least checked around to make sure that was the best price?
I believe that every authorized dealer of the Exmark uses this state contract, and they all agree to that MSRP.
Is a set price statewide?
It is. It gets adjusted yearly, depending on inflation. I do not think that if we went to each other authorized dealer in the state, that we would get a different price that they've agreed on to a market price, and it's provided on that state contract that's 20%.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, typically, if you look at the state contracts, I haven't seen this one specifically, typically the language is in there that prevents the bid winner from selling it to anyone for a price lower than the price they gave the state. So you feel comfortable normally that that's a great price.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is to authorize the city manager to purchase an Exmark Laser ZE 48-inch mower. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Reifler, you are authorized to proceed. Thank you. Item 19, unfinished business. Do you know any unfinished business at this time?
Just as a point of comment, just a quick Google search, the mower lists at $12,999, so that would be 20% off of that.
Good. The other unfinished business. All right, now we are on to item 20, which is city council for comments. This one will be made with councilmember Elliott.
Oh, wow. I think we've accomplished a great deal tonight and prior to the week, and I thank everybody for their cooperation, and I certainly, I know he's left for the night, but I give my sincere congratulations to Officer Shaw Roberts.
Was it Robert Shaw?
Robert Shaw, excuse me. And I must say that I have encountered him just in my daily walks throughout the community, and I think he represents exactly what good public servants do. He makes an effort to connect with people. He's kind. He knows the area, and he certainly gave his all on that day, and we thank him again.
All right. Mr. Bankard, you're up.
I'm sure the traffic will start increasing the next couple of weeks with the spring training coming down and everything like that. We'll probably have a lot of problems, citizens not being able to get out in the street, but I think it's something you just have to bear with. There's really not much we can do. Happy birthday, Babe Ruth, 129 for.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, very happy that we were able to move the street drainage project along the way, so hopefully we'll get them started as quickly as we possibly can. We all are familiar, obviously, with the hurricane season on June 1. That doesn't mean sometimes we actually have main hurricanes part of that, so it can happen. We hope we don't have any until August, but that may or may not be the case. So, happy that that's moving along, and it'll be enjoyable to see the improvements made, and I know our citizens will enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. As always, I'd like to thank everyone who's here tonight and everyone who watched at home. I'd also like to take this moment to thank this council for hanging in there, letting the state run you off. I tried, but it didn't work. I appreciate your patience. I appreciate your ability to remain calm, even when we don't agree. And I appreciate everyone having an open mind, being able to work together. I still think this is one of the best councils in all of Dallas County. I'm proud of everyone. So, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you.